Sisters Workshop. First up is introduction with our new sheriff of Deschutes County Sheriff Rupert. Sure, you can sit there.
You can also take the mic and walk around.
Work with that?
Oh, whatever you like.
Okay. Yeah, I don't like, I like looking at everybody, so.
Okay.
Is this working?
Yes, the closer the better.
Want me to introduce myself?
Yeah, please.
I wasn't here. Made the initial, I wasn't sure if there was more to talk about.
It's open mic night, so.
Yeah, perfect. No karaoke, I guarantee it, I'm not good at singing. I recognize a lot of the faces here, a lot of the people here I've known for years. I've been part of the Sisters Rodeo for probably 20 years. I worked at, as a deputy, as a sergeant, as a lieutenant, as a captain. Then I volunteered for the last three or four years overseeing their security for the rodeo. This year I had to bow out because I've been a little bit busy, but, so I know a lot of you. Like the mayor said, I'm Ty Rupert. I've been with the Deschutes County Sheriff's Office for 20 years. I started as a reserve deputy 20 years ago and I've worked my way all the way up to the new sheriff in town, as we say. I've held every rank, like I said, all the way up, I've been patrol, I've been detectives, oversaw search and rescue, emergency management. Most recently in January, I was promoted to captain under Kent Vaner Camp. And then you all know the story behind that, he's not with us anymore, rightfully so. There's no room in law enforcement for unethical behavior or especially a liar. I'm not okay with that. The commissioner opened up for us to apply and I've been asked if I was crazy for applying. And I said, no, I'm not crazy. I have incredible employees and I work in an incredible place and I live in an incredible community. And so the decision was very easy for me because for those reasons alone, I work with great people, they just need a good boss. And I plan on being that good boss for them for a long time, hopefully, for as long as they'll have me and hopefully for as long as you have me. I'm a former Marine, so I did four years of the United States Marine Corps, I got out in 1991. And for me, that's kind of where it all began. A lot of moral and ethical teamwork, a lot of things that I learned in the Marine Corps is what holds me true to this day. I was hired in 2005 with the Sheriff's Office by Sheriff Les Stiles. Les Stiles was one of those people that was former military. He made it clear to me in the beginning, if you lie, cheat, or steal, you will not be a part of this organization. And that was noted from my first day and it, and it holds true to this day. And I also, for those of you that know Larry Blanton, Sheriff Blanton, I'm still in contact with him. In fact, I'm having coffee with him tomorrow morning. As a sheriff, I don't have all the answers, I'm brand new. And so I'm not afraid to ask if I don't know. I would rather ask a question than to make a poor decision because that poor decision could affect the citizens, it could affect my agency, it could affect us financially if I make a poor decision. As you know, we've have a history of not good headlines for a lot of years. And those good, those bad headlines have been at the top. They haven't been at the, at the bottom of the folks that have been doing the work. That's why I say they've been overshadowed for a lot of years and I plan on changing that. I don't ask for your trust right now. There's people in this room that have known me for a long time and they'll tell you that what they see today is the same person they knew 26 years ago. In fact, a young lady in the back is married to a close friend of mine, Kurt Kalberg. Kurt Kalberg has known me for 26 years. I knew him when I was in the private sector. I was the vice president of a company in Redmond called Fuel Save. And I plan on staying that way, keeping myself humble, but being here for your needs because I work for you. So financially, I'm looking at everything on the budget from the simplest thing to the most expensive thing. Or if I can save money, I want to save money. I don't spend your money recklessly. I'm pretty cheap myself in my own life, so I don't spend money recklessly and I'm certainly not going to spend your money recklessly. Operating our law enforcement business, we have a $68 million a year business. It's expensive. And I don't take that lightly. But my, my responsibility is that we're in the public safety business and my job is to make sure that we provide livability in Deschutes County so that the citizens and the people visiting here can do it safely. And so you'll start seeing me coming out, I'm going to start having town hall meetings, I'm going to do coffee with the sheriff. I like visiting because I want your feedback of both. I want to hear what we're doing good, what you like about our office. But also I got pretty big shoulders, so if anybody says, hey, I'm not real happy with this, please tell me. Because if I, if I don't know about it, I can't fix it. So I'll be looking forward to coming out and meeting with everybody over, they're going to start scheduling those in October, so you'll see me out and about. Other than that, I guess I'll ask if there's any questions from anybody. I appreciate the invite by the city council, city manager, mayor to come out and visit with you all tonight, so.
Thank you for your service, appreciate that, I'm a veteran as well and I can say the same thing in my life as well. That's really when I got my stuff together, it was in the military and you learn how to put your life into a framework that works for you and it, it certainly has helped me in my life as well. And secondly, if you see a red Bronco driving around a little too fast in the county, just forgive him, he's, he's in a rush.
Is it the newer one out there?
Yeah, it's not, it's not mine.
There's no piece of paper, I didn't leave a piece of paper on the window, you're okay?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I think some of us met you at the community meeting for the flat fire and we really appreciate you coming up for that as well.
Yes, absolutely, I was, I was just telling the city manager. I, I, we're so lucky. We're so lucky on that fire, you know, we lost some homes. I don't ever want to lose a home, it's not, I don't ever want that. But in the grand scheme of things of what we could have lost is, is it's scary if we think about what we could have lost. Most importantly is we didn't lose any, we didn't lose any people. Because we can't replace them, you know, unfortunately, and I don't mean any disrespect on the homes that were lost. We can rebuild a home, we'll never replace the artifacts inside. But if we lose a person, we can never replace them and we're fortunate that that didn't happen, so.
I just want to thank you for coming by Ty, I know we also met at the fire community meeting. And I just want to say that we love our Lieutenant Davis and our deputies so much here. They're fantastic guys and they're just on it and I just want to give them praise and kudos to you. So you know how happy we are as a city with their service.
Yeah, well, thank you, I appreciate that. They're, they do a phenomenal job. I've known, I've worked with Lieutenant Davis for 20 years because I've been there 20, he's been there longer. And some of the guys, I've been, you know, I know them all, well, they work with me now, but before that, I worked with them all. And you guys are lucky, you have really good, really good deputies and lieutenant out here and I'd met with the city manager recently just to put his mind at ease. Like I don't have any, there's no changes, so I don't have any changes as long as things are good. But on the flip side of that, if there is, ever is an issue, regardless of them or something that you have questions, please let me know. Because like I said, if I don't know about it, I can't fix it or I can't address it. And we'll do everything we can to try to fix something. Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for coming up and spending a few minutes with us, we appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate the invite, thank you. I didn't know what to expect, I got here. She says, do you have your PowerPoint? And I'm like, oh, no one told me. I was the PowerPoint. Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up on our agenda, we have a presentation on the Northwest Park conceptual plans process from planner Matt Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Matthew Martin, principal planner, City of Sisters. Brought us a moment to queue up our PowerPoint presentation on a very different topic, a different theme regarding the Sisters newest park that we're planning for, Northwest Park, located at the roundabout of Highway 20 on the west side of town. We've been working since earlier this year with the consultant team of John Chaplin, the project manager, and his team at NV5 to develop a master plan for the overall development of the, the new site and, and park. And throughout the process involved his analysis of the, the site itself, public engagement efforts. And then what we bring to you today is three conceptual plans for consideration and comment. That will then be those comments, not only yours, but those that were presented and provided at the City Parks Advisory Board meeting earlier this month and the, the public comments that we've received throughout. That will be integrated into that final preferred concept. And we'll come back for, for final blessing, so to speak, and then will result in that master plan that will involve not only the, the amenities of the site, but also strategies for phasing and funding of the, the park itself. So with that, just wanted to offer some introductory comments and then pass it over to John.
All right, thank you, Matt, and thank you, city council and mayor, for the opportunity to be here. It's really an honor for me to be a part of this project. As Matt mentioned, my name's John Champlin. I'm a landscape architect with a company called NV5, we're a multidisciplinary engineering firm based in Wilsonville, so. We'll be taking the project through the master planning stage, currently presenting the alternatives this evening, whittling that down to a preferred final concept with a cost estimate and phasing plan for the project. Tonight's agenda, so we're going to start by reviewing the existing conditions and site analysis that we put together. We're going to review our public engagement process and the feedback that was received during that process. We'll then dig into the conceptual design alternatives, we'll have three of those. And then finally, talk about the project schedule and next steps. So to begin, the existing site conditions. The first thing that we noticed about the site is its location. It's, it's right there at the roundabout of Highway 20 and Barclay. It's really a very interesting parcel in that it kind of has just naturally a gateway experience based on its location. The, the site conditions, the overall site is just under three acres in size, it's relatively flat, which is nice for development. It has a lot of mature ponderosa pines and junipers. And it also has very good access for utilities and vehicles and pedestrians. The, the current vehicular access that is existing would come off of Canopy Way. And then a future right away will be built on the southeast part of the site. And that would be called Old Growth Way. Vehicular access can't by zoning code come off of Barclay or the highway nor that we would really want it to, it's too close to the roundabout. One thing that is interesting is we have a variety of, of land use that abuts our site, including single family and commercial. The single family is on the, on the eastern portion. Commercial zoning currently on the Barclay frontage. And our understanding is that that is, they're looking at food trucks for that parcel. Not set in stone, but that's kind of the idea. And then along the highway on the south side would be mixed use, commercial retail, first floor residential up above. So really dynamic location. One thing to be aware of is there's a small parcel that actually fronts onto the roundabout that, that is private property and is not a part of the project. Part of our analysis that we feel is important is specifically along the residential, single family residential is to create a, a buffer. And so there's a variety of ways to do that, berming, vegetation, really just to, you know, allow the, the single family residences to have some privacy there.
John, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
The private property piece, is that something that would, do we know if that would ever be developed? If, I'm not familiar with that.
It is really undevelopable, it currently has easements all running through it. It has two stormwater basins from the, from the right away from the streets that are there. So really, there's no potential for that to ever be developed.
Thanks, helpful.
Our first step in this project intentionally was to reach out to the public to hear their voice before we began the design process. And we started small and we went, we went larger. So our first step in April was to put together some stakeholder interviews. So that happened across two meetings that were led by Stephen Ames and Ruth Williamson. And they gathered a great level of feedback, it's hard to really summarize it here, but I'll just touch on the highlights. Some of the outcomes from that, from those two meetings were that this park should be something new, it should be something that Sisters doesn't already have. It should definitely be multipurpose and multi-seasonal. And the idea of a gateway experience came to the forefront during the meetings. And also something for all ages, not just, you know, specifically to one group, but if there is a group that was underserved in the community, it's actually the teens is what stakeholders were suggesting. Next, in May, we had a public open house, so this was a sort of informal presentation to the public. We had approximately 30 community members attend. Some of the responses from this, from the open house were that the park should have a variety of uses. The, the improvements of the park and what the park becomes should enhance the site's natural setting. And then also that the, the improvement should be medium to smaller size in nature. Lastly, the, the public survey happened in July. This received almost 600 completed responses, which was a, which was a great response. We focused this, the, the survey on two themes. What does the community want to see inside a pavilion and what would they want to see outside of a pavilion? So in order, inside the pavilion, the number one response was a seasonal ice rink. Number two, an event gathering space. Three, sport courts. Four, seasonal roller rink. Outside the pavilion, the number one response was a natural place gate. Then an event lawn, picnic area, boulders, sport courts, lawn sports, and interpretive signage.
Question on the seasonal ice rink, was that qualified in any way in terms of size or is for ice skating or hockey, was it qualified in any way?
No, it, it was just characterized as the, the option for some type of ice skating facility. So I, I think the, the analysis and consideration is what's feasible on the site. You know, not only site constraints, but also the, the opportunities either at full size rink for hockey or rather a, a smaller sheet that offers recreational skating opportunities. I did want to interject and I overlooked from, from the, the beginning and the direction the council is the intent of this, this site, or at least to be considered is a multi-use, multi-seasonal facility on the property. So as we look at these concepts, that's why we really emphasize this, this indoor or, or covered structure that provides those, those multipurpose, multiple recreational opportunities within the, the structure itself. And emphasizing the, the multi-season to, to be able to provide those shoulder season recreational opportunities, not only for, for citizens as well as visitors alike. So wanted to acknowledge that. That's why we really begin with this, this facility as the initial analysis.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, so out of the public engagement process, three themes came as a result, came forward. And those ideas are the ideas of recreate, congregate, and interpret. And so we developed three design alternatives based around those three themes. Each one of the alternatives, you're, you're going to see some overlap between them, but each one of them, we looked at a, a shoulder and summer use and then a winter use. So each one of the concepts, we have two plans that represent those seasonal changes. Our first option, option A, is centered around this idea of recreate. So this concept really is all about a recreational pavilion that will be multi-seasonal, multi-use. Right now, we're looking at the, the summer and shoulder program that we developed. The entire facility is 38,000 square feet. Of that, the open air portion, this could be closed and conditioned when needed, but the open air portion is 27,500 square feet. The remainder of that keynote D at the bottom would be a 3,500 square foot kind of building systems, HVAC, the cooling system for an ice rink, storage, maintenance. Off of that, you can see a, you know, back of house, maintenance yard. On the north end keynote E, that's a 7,000 square foot, enclosed restroom, concessions, offices, skate rentals. This, this is really going to become kind of the hub of, of the building where the entrance will be located. At our next phase, if, you know, this plan moves forward, all of our plans, we're going to have an architect on our team and start to really kind of program out that space, but generally, that's what would happen there. On the inside of the facility, we are currently showing primarily for scale and we're, we would really want to develop with the city a, a program for what sports courts would go there. But currently, you're looking at two basketball courts, the top one would be overlaid with three pickleball. The bottom one would have an overlay of volleyball. And then below that would be two tennis courts. In addition to that keynote F would be a climbing wall. So that would be something that could have interchangeable handholds, open year round. The rest of the site, large parking lot, so 60 total parking spaces in the parking lot would be pull through from Canopy Way all the way to Old Growth Way. This would include a drop off. Now, we felt this would be important for a facility this size. We'll get into it at the next, at the winter season, but if tournaments were held here, we would want to have that drop off and have potentially off-site parking. On the north end, we are locating a nature scape playground there, intermixed amongst the existing trees. So something that would have all natural materials, no plastic, no metal. We're thinking wood, boulders, those sorts of things. Its proximity to Barclay is not ideal, but we would want to have some sort of security fencing if, along that edge, if that's where the, the playground is located. Finally keynote J would be your buffer zone to the single family residential. This could be informal, not irrigated lawn, but something that could be mowed where somebody could come and throw a frisbee or, or lay out a blanket. Next slide is the winter program. So on this concept, we're looking at a full sheet of, of ice or a full-size hockey. So that is 200 feet by 85 feet. This could obviously house, you know, hockey games and, and hockey tournaments. One thing that we would look at is if the, a goal is for tournament play, we'd want to have locker rooms built in to the, to the facility to facilitate that. We wanted to look at some character imagery, give you an idea of what this, you know, facility could, could start to look like. We, we fit, we like the idea of a timber structure. It speaks to the, you know, the community, also the location, the ranger station is right there, something that would kind of mimic that aesthetic. Variety of sport courts could be located inside the, inside the pavilion like we talked about. One thing I, I failed to mention, we did consider a roller rink on the inside. Didn't show it on the summer season just because it would get kind of busy overlaid with all the sport courts. But you can imagine the hockey rink could become that, that summertime roller rink as well.
So, John, you mentioned that if, so this is a, and I'm not great with hockey terms, but it's a regulation-sized hockey rink?
Correct.
Do you feel like there's room here for locker rooms in the space? I guess it would be an E, or is that getting kind of tight?
We, we really need to, so like I mentioned, we have an architect on our team. We're really going to have to dig into that if this concept moves forward. There is some expansion potential on the south. There's a water easement that comes across the site, but where the maintenance yard is, that could, you know, become enclosed locker rooms. Just speaking with our architect, conceptually, we do feel like we could make that work.
Okay, thanks, that's good information.
Great question.
And to add to that, is it, is there room for bleachers for observation?
Yes.
The tournaments and?
Yes, the, this east side would have the option to wheel in some bleachers. Basically open, open up the facility to the drop off and wheel in up to, you know, five row bleachers. It, it's not going to be grandstands, but you know, there, there's some space for bleachers.
And does this include, you know, the space for like penalty boxes and all that kind of stuff? Is that included in that, those dimensions?
We, we would probably locate the teams on, on actually the, the other side, the benches and the penalty boxes. Yes, there's, there's space, it would be pretty much restricted to the teams on the, on the west side and spectators on the east. Lastly.
Pardon me, Gary has raised his hand. Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, um, this was, all this was discussed at length with the, the groups as well and your, your questions are good. I'm wondering if we, if it'd be wise to go through the different concepts, there's quite a bit of meat there and they're all very different and then have a little discussion at the end and I can provide some light as to how the discussion went with the group beyond the notes that were sent in the summary. I, I think I would say on the ice sheet, the full-size ice sheet, as we talked more and more about it, there was some sense that while we could bring tournaments in and have a lot of people there, once in a while, that maybe we were better off to look at a smaller footprint and have more exterior activities, which you'll see in, and leave more of the trees, which you'll see in some of the other plans and devices. So as we move forward, I think they'll start to come to light a little bit.
All right, thank you.
Lastly, just wanted to mention some character imagery for a nature scape playground. Again, natural materials, wood, rock, even potentially rope connected to the existing trees could be really interactive for, for kids. Okay, jumping to option B, so this option again is centered around this idea of congregate. So that theme drove this concept. The, the pavilion space is reduced, the size is in this option 32,700 square feet. Again, this would be all-season, multi-use. Looking at the summer and shoulder program for this concept, on the inside, we have a basketball court overlaid with three pickleball, full-size tennis in the middle and then two volleyball courts in the bottom. One thing to note, if we have racket sports, we're going to need netting and, and that sort of thing, which is something we'll, we'll dig into more detail in the future. In this option, at the bottom keynote D is going to become that building facilities, HVAC, cooling systems. This would also have your storage and skate rentals. Keynote E would be a small concessions window and the restrooms for the, for the facility. On the west corner, we are locating a permanent stage. So this idea of congregate, providing the community a place for fairly large gatherings. We would want to structure the building in a way that the, that the west and northwest walls could be enclosed if there were events. You know, thinking about even potentially, you know, awards ceremonies, those sorts of things that could happen there. But could be, you know, year-round. The outside of the, of the, of the facility, we're showing quite a lot in terms of the improvements outside. So right in the middle, we've got a nature scape playground. That's keynote H. Just south of that, we're showing two sports courts. We have basketball and tennis located there. Keynote I, we really like this idea of creating the Three Sisters bouldering zone. So something that speaks to this location, you know, it's, it's very unique to this community, but something that would be themed around the Three Sisters. Keynote K would be a sand volleyball pit. Up in the north keynote F would be a outdoor dining congregation area. So one would be pa- a paved area with shade sales, another outdoor picnic tables on event lawn. Or not really event lawn, but just irrigated lawn. That would be keynote, keynote G. And we're locating those in relation to the, to the building, but also in relation to the potential food trucks next door. So we thought that that was a really kind of nice feature for the teens, actually. I mean, recreational improvements are, are gonna attract teens, but also teens want a place to hang out, somewhere to, you know, grab, grab a drink and go hang out with their friends, you know, to pick the tables. A slightly smaller parking lot, so this would be a forty-one stall parking lot. The buffer to the residential is tight, but we would want to do something with berming and, and probably some pretty dense vegetation to provide that privacy there. The winter program for this concept would have a slightly smaller hockey rink. Now, this is not regulation, but certainly could have competitive youth games and, you know, adult, probably club games. But is likely not going to attract, you know, large tournaments or tournament play or anything like that, but could be something for less formal hockey. Jumping to some character imagery, again, we, we like the concept of a timber-framed structure. The dining space, outdoor shade sales, shade is, is very important. We heard a lot of that feedback from the community. And then the indoor sport courts, sand volleyball pit, outdoor sport courts, nature scape playgrounds, and this idea of the Three Sisters bouldering. And we would actually want the, the bouldering zone to be used by kids all the way up to experts. So kind of, you know, a novice to intermediate to expert level bouldering zone. The last concept, option C, is centered around this idea of interpret. So we wove some interpretive elements into this concept and, and I'll speak to those. But to start, the facility would be quite a bit smaller. So this is a seventeen thousand five hundred square foot facility. Again, could be enclosed when needed during the harsh, harshest seasons. Quite a bit smaller, fully enclosed building keynote C on the north side. So that's gonna include, you know, skate rentals, all of the, the building's systems and your maintenance. The restrooms, we're actually locating in a separate building, so that would be keynote D. And that is gonna be the solid, the solid restrooms of that building would be connected to an overhead picnic shelter, covered picnic shelter, but something where the picnic tables could be pulled out and actually could be turned into an event stage that would front onto an event lawn. So that's keynote F, you know, at the, at the center of the, of the concept. Anchoring this site would be that event lawn. That's intermixed amongst all the existing trees. So keeping as many of the existing trees, trying to, you know, honor what we heard from the public and, and, you know, keeping that natural aesthetic. We're also keeping the existing trees on this southwest corner. Keynote H would be a nature scape playground, but would actually integrate a fire lookout tower. So that would be really become a, an attraction, an amenity where kids are gonna be bringing their parents to as much as they can. But the parents could actually go up into that and get a really interesting vantage point, you know, of the, of the community from there. With that, we like the idea of building in some elevated platforms and, and logs, potentially some ropes as well, again, intermixed in the, in those existing trees. Adjacent to that keynote I would be the, another bouldering zone. So carrying forward that Three Sisters bouldering idea. Surrounding that keynote J is an interpretive nature walk. So something where people, people could come, walk, sit on a bench, but have interpretive signage. So that can range from anything from historical to, you know, ecological to indigenous peoples. It could be a variety of all of those things, but interpretive signage where people could come and learn something about, you know, the rich history of, of sisters. The, on the far north, we're locating two bocce ball pits along with kind of a dedicated slack planning area. There's a couple of picnic tables there to kind of help activate that zone, including another portion of nature walk, interpretive nature walk on that, on that far side, which would be interwoven into that buffer zone to the residential. And then on this concept, the parking lot would be twenty-nine spaces. So kind of whittling down in size on parking, but would become, would, would be accessed off of Old Growth Way. So there would be no vehicular access off of Canopy Way, although there will be pedestrian access from, from Canopy Way. One thing that's interwoven into all of these concepts is bicycle parking. So you can see that across the site, bicycle parking and benches. Thinking about a winter program for this facility, this would not be a hockey rink. This would be a smaller sheet of ice. So the, the ice rink you're looking at here, the size is a hundred and twenty feet by ninety feet. A good comparison is the, the ice skating rink in Sun River at the Village. It's, that's actually smaller than this one. That one is about a hundred by sixty. So we'd be bigger than that, but quite a bit smaller than a full-size hockey rink. Character imagery, smaller pavilion for, for ice skating. Of course, indoor sport courts, bocce. The idea of a picnic shelter slash event stage area, something that's multipurpose. A true event lawn that would front onto that, that structure. Interpretive signage. Wanted to share this image. This is, I believe, the first fire watch tower in Sisters. It was a ponderosa pine that was completely limbed and they put a platform at the top. So that could be some, an idea like that could be woven into the interpretive signage. A new fire watch tower. Obviously, something very safe, but accessible by all ages. And then some platforms and elevated nature scape built into that. And then again, bouldering. So in, in closing, just wanted to briefly loop back. So option A was centered around the idea of Recreate. Option B around this idea of Congregate. And option C around the idea of Interpret. I wanna briefly talk about project schedule and next steps, and then we'll get to some, some comments. We are currently working through the three design alternatives. Our goal with the Parks Board meeting last week, the meeting this evening, and the public outreach that's gonna take place next is to get feedback on these three alternatives, bring those down to a single preferred design. Once we have that, we're gonna provide a cost estimate for that. And then start looking at how we can actually fund that project. You know, how are we gonna, you know, develop the dollars, find the funding, grants, those sorts of things? We're gonna explore that with our team. And based on that, develop phasing plan if necessary. If we need to, if we need to, you know, divvy this thing up into multiple phases, we're, we're gonna look at that. After that's done, we're gonna combine everything together and issue a final report. There will be another presentation to, to you all of that preferred concept and phasing plan before that final report is issued. We should, by the end of this year, have a pretty good idea of what that final concept and, and cost estimate is gonna look like. And then the final report will be issued at the beginning of next year.
John, will that cost estimate include ongoing maintenance and operations?
It's absolutely something that we can look at. Typically, we, when we look at a cost estimate for a project like this, we're really looking at construction costs. But I think depending on what the facility becomes, what the project becomes, it is gonna be a part of it, especially if it's a, a larger facility that's gonna require staffing. That will, that will be integral to that process.
So this is just a general overview question, but are there? I've not been through one of these before, thinking about liability with different types of, you know, pieces that have, may have more or less risk. Is that something we need to consider? Or is that just something that's covered by Parks Insurance? I mean, I, I just want to understand that.
It's a great question. Some of it's covered through recreational immunity, especially for the more outdoor activities. Indoor, they're paying, you know, a fee to use that service. Usually, there's a waiver or something if you're a part of a league for hockey or something like that. But yeah, I mean, that's something that would be covered through the city's insurance provider.
All right, so it, it, that doesn't need to feed in anywhere, really?
I think when we get into cost estimates, I mean, it's one thing to build the facility, but then the deeper dive would then be into the operations and maintenance of the facility, which would include, you know, cost to ensure replacement values and all that.
All right, thank you.
And before we have more questions, Matt, what do you need from us today, kind of specifically?
The goal for today is to get some initial feedback on elements, or if you have a particular options that you see have a preference for. I'm not looking for necessarily a boat or consensus, but rather just that, that input of, of if there's a, an option that you're, you're leaning towards or particular elements of those designs that you prefer or do not prefer, so that then John and his team can take it back to, to refine the, you know, kind of, and we've got kind of three options that are, can be a menu of, of amenities and improvements to, to refine into one concept.
Okay, and then Gary has his hand up.
Yeah, I think that with the committee discussed this at length, it actually was a very good discussion. There was probably more, they were probably a little bit happier with the smaller footprint of both B and C than of A, even though they were losing the recreational aspect, I mean, the tournament aspect of a full-size regulation hockey rink. One thing I will say that was unanimous with the group was that the restrooms, there can be restrooms in that little pavilion providing it's included, but there will need to be restrooms in Concept C's main building. I, I'm not sure who sees anybody using the ice rink or whatever in the winter, scurrying across a snow-covered parking lot to try to get to a restroom, especially with a toddler who is needing to get there fast. So there, there would be changes made to this based upon the input, but these are great conceptual designs. And I think that really what the, the committee wants, and what I think that, based having done four of these in the park districts in my past, is that really what amenities? Like you said, do you want to see in here? And what footprint looks the best to you? And then they work with what goes in. All these drawings that are in here are just literally conceptual. So that's, I think, as we think as a, as a committee move forward. And I will say one more thing. When I asked Jennifer Holland about option A, she, she had real concerns about whether or not that could be programmed and pay for itself with pay-to-play, where they're not having a lot of success with pay-to-play in the new building. So something to think about as we move forward.
Okay, if you have more questions or comments or?
Yeah, I, I, I don't have too many questions other than that, the fire tower. How co- how tall is that, you think? I mean, is that like thirty feet, twenty feet?
You know, I'd like to get it up twenty feet or more if we can.
I, I think it's a really, really interesting nod to what we just went through, A. And B, it's something to kind of define it, you know what I mean? I'll just say, you know, you know me, I like quick decisions and stuff. I really, really prefer C, smaller footprint, more grass, less parking. Interpretive in a way, you know? I think that all of that is very interesting to me. I think that we'll have other opportunities down the road possibly for a larger recreation facility to take care of some of that programmatic, programmatic things like tournaments and more sports, hopefully in the UGB area if that happens. This is, he called it a gateway, but we already have a gateway park and that's okay. But this is the true gateway and this is where people are gonna see things. And I think something like a Sasquatch or a fire tower or something like that, that kind of is a little taller than other things is really appealing to me. It's something the kids can climb on, but families can do it together too. So I really prefer C, although I'm, I'm not happy how the parking splits the site a little bit. And if we could do C, but maybe re, reimagine the parking so it was kind of out of the way, that would be better. But mostly C.
I'm inclined to, whatever shape or amenities we go with, not have it dependent very much on programs right now. I'm, I, I'm not comfortable in thinking that we are, are ready to have somebody do that. You know, love to hear other thoughts on that. There's a lot of these amenities I do like. I love the open space, you know, the natural play area for the kids. I love the bouldering. I'd love to work in some of the climbing things. I mean, I, I think that's just a tactile thing that seems like burns a lot of energy, which to me seems good. I love your thought on having the picnic area by the food trucks, kind of a hang place. I think you're right, teenagers, that's one that we've talked about. That's one of the groups of people we're underserving right now. And I, I like that thought process. Yeah, I would also, I, I don't know if this is a thing here, and I'm not a basketball player. I'm like very un-bordy athletic. But, you know, having a place, it seems like where kids can do a pickup game outside or something, just go out and just bounce the ball and shoot hoops or something. I, I like the idea of that. I don't know much about if that's things that kids still do these days or not. But I, that was in one of the concepts that, yeah, that was something I really liked.
And I had some questions about, I, I think my overarching concern of this, this location is sound. And, you know, sound is kind of affects us in two ways. One is that it's hard, hard to communicate or hear each other or, or hear anything going on. And obviously, you know, there will be lots of semis and vehicles going through that roundabout and that number's probably not gonna go down anytime soon. You, you know, and e- even though it's kind of being integrated into a more walkable, bikeable community. And the second thing is, is that there's that kind of subconscious effect that, you know, we do kind of stray away from sound. So, you know, like in the first concept, like for instance, you know, you said it wasn't ideal, but like having the, the playground next to Barclay. You know, people just don't like to be near kind of busy roads and part of that is the sound factor. Even though, you know, I'm sure it would be very safe and far off the road. But people just kind of, when they want to recreate and relax, you know, it's, sound is, I think, a really big issue. So just looking at these proposals, that, that kind of kept coming up to me, especially if it was going to be a, an open pavilion. You know, just mitigating for, for sound in that respect. You know, I keep thinking about the, you know, the rink and, and bend, that's an open one and it's right next to a roundabout. It does, it, it gets a lot of traffic, but it, it's not like a lot of semi-traffic or a lot of large vehicle traffic. So it's a little bit of a different situation. But, you know, which kind of, it, it inclines me to think like maybe it, it just needs to be, you know, fully enclosed, maybe like permanently. But, or at least on, on those, those sides, but I'm just kind of thinking out loud. And the other thing I had concerns about with an open pavilion is, you know, our, our dark skies designation. And obviously we would want these facilities to be used at night and in the winter. And, and you kind of, I, I just wonder about light pollution coming out if it is open. You know, so those were kind of two things that, that popped out to me. And then I just, I don't have an answer for this or anything, but you know, the, the parking is, is, is kind of a conundrum. Because again, we're building this in a, in a, in a neighborhood. There will be three hotels within walking distance of this location as well, if, if visitors want to use this facility. You know, however, you know, Sisters is kind of the opposite of the other communities in central Oregon, where the majority of people who might be using this facility might be living outside the city versus inside. And, you know, even though I'm a big proponent of, you know, bike, pet infrastructure, you know, that's, it's still an, an area of our, our, you know, our county that you, you kind of need to drive for a lot of instances. So I always err on, even though I don't want to, I always kind of err on the side of a larger parking lot. And especially once we start creeping towards any sort of sport like hockey, for instance, that, that's a lot of gear and, and nobody's walking or, or biking there with, with their, their gear, you know, everybody's driving. So it kind of compounds that, that parking need. So, so those are just some thoughts on that. And, you know, the, yeah, the lookout tower concept, I mean, that could be, if we were going to build a tall one, I would, somewhere, I would prefer that actually had a view. And so in this case, that would be, you know, like probably fifty feet, which is probably not what we're going to do. Or if we did something like that, it would be in another part of the community where, you know, it could be a lot shorter and, and a view could be achieved easier. However, it kind of makes me think if it was something closer to the ground, like, like in Bend, there's a, like Columbia Park and Harmon Park that have like the boats that, you know, I, I grew up on. And, you know, there's Pirate Ship, I think Columbia Park. And, and so those are just really fun play structures that, that people just keep coming back to for over and over. You know, so if it was maybe, you know, more in that vein, you know? So maybe, maybe it's like, looks like a lookout, but it's more just kind of lower to the ground. But, you know, just kind of built out like that. I mean, I used to be a lookout, so I love the idea, so. But yeah, I think those were like, you know, just my, my questions and, and kind of comments, looking at these. And I mean, I guess one question I have is that a lot of these are just, there's a lot of amenities just packed in there, you know? And is that, is that too much? I mean, I, I love, and I know it's a concept and, you know, we're just trying to play with a little math here. But yeah, I just, you know, if there's like a trade-off of having too much, and it could be a question for you or Gary, since he has kind of a lot of experiences.
Yeah, that's a great comment. It's a comment we also received from Parks Advisory Board. That they, they kind of felt like maybe we're trying to do a little too much on this site. And so we do, in this process, we did try to err on the side of, of more because it's a lot easier to draw back than it is to put in more improvements. And so I, I do agree, I do think that there, we, we really maxed out the site in all of these concepts. And in the next iterations can, can start to dial that back.
I appreciate all the options, like it's nice to have a lot to look at and to think about and, and. Yeah, I just like to have more to think about and you've come up with like such a plethora of things to, to look at. So I, thank you.
And Gary has his hand up?
Yeah, I think that, that summarized up real well the kind of discussion that the committee had. And I know that there was a lot of discussion in option C about that pavilion and with the restrooms. Like I said, they wanted the restrooms in the building. And there was some question that if you use that, do we really need another outdoor music stage? When we've got First Street Park or some of the other places in town, would there be something that might go there that would be a little bit better in terms of different from what's going on? And the last concern that I had, I didn't voice it in that group because we're, this is all conceptual. With the fire tower plan is constructing something in a child's playground that is not ADA accessible could be difficult at best. And so how you would provide ADA access to the upper levels of that tower could be an expensive question, but I'm sure that our consultants have a solution to that.
Lot of ramps.
Yeah, yeah.
Depending on how high it is.
Yeah.
It would certainly be a challenge.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I, thank you for all these options. That's wonderful. I too agree with a smaller footprint, like Counselor Pridon for option C. When I look at option A, I'm very, I, I just think, I just see huge dollar signs. The bend rink was nine point two million to install and that was ten years ago. Annual maintenance is four hundred to five hundred thousand a year. I mean, that, that's a third of our whole city budget. So I'm a little concerned about that one. So, and, and it is a smaller space. So I, what I like about option C, I think it's a family-friendly ice skating rink. It could be a holiday tradition. Redmond unfortunately had to close their temporary one that they had. And they're trying to, to, to recover from that and get something built because it was so popular. So I would love to see that. Also for the playground, I think something that's really popular even with teens are these ninja courses. Because of the television show, all of these obstacle courses are really, really cool for some of these kids. And I'd love to see that more. Bocce, okay, bocce ball. I went over to the community center, asked them how many people have requested bocce ball and, and they think maybe one five years ago or something, I don't know. So I, I would just say considering to replace that bocce ball area with an outside basketball court, like Counselor McDougal was saying, or a sand volleyball court, which I thought was cool in option B. And then I'd like to get the climbing wall back in somewhere. And if that went in between the courts, that would help with the balls going back and forth between the courts. Because there's nothing more frustrating than having a pickleball run across your basketball game. So I would consider that. And I like the seasonal roller skating too. That option being available to alternate that between the ice skating or how, however it would be done with the courts, I don't know. Picnic spaces, I think, I think our community really needs more options to rent picnic spaces for birthday parties or any kind of party. So I, I'm saying promote more of that picnic space. And other than that, I, I think that looks good. I, I lean towards option C. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to make one more comment following yours up. Those climbing walls can be sound walls too, right? So if they're on the edge of the property, they have a dual purpose. So you can just keep that in mind if you're trying to make a sound break between either the neighborhood and the park or the roundabout in the park. I think if you back it up against those edges somewhere, that might be something to think about as well. And also, if, if there is fencing between those areas, especially on the roundabout side, it'd be nice if they were somewhat decorative, like mountainscape on the top, you know, where it just kind of creates a different shape than a rectangular fence.
Okay, um, do you need anything else from us? Is that kind of enough information or did you want?
I looked to John for that.
Oh, I think this is very valuable feedback. Thank you very much. A lot of what you voiced is, is actually echoed what the Parks Advisory Board said as well. So, you know, I think we're finding some alignment there and really valuable feedback to go back to the drawing board. So really appreciate it.
Yeah, okay.
And so we expect to be back later this year with that preferred concept. That's integrated the, the community's feedback, your feedback for additional refinement and, and, and input. So we'll see you then.
All right. Thank you for your help. And also I want to thank everybody on the, the committees that helped with this and everybody that's shown up, everybody that surveys. Still in process, but I just wanted to, to thank all those people that's put in a lot of time on this. So thank you. We're going to adjourn the workshop here and we will start the regular meeting at six forty. Okay, I'd like to call to order the September tenth, twenty twenty-five regulars Sister City Council meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, roll call please.
Mayor Letts.
Here.
Counsel President McDougal.
Here.
Counselor Pridon.
Aye.
Counselor Ross.
Present.
Counselor Pellerin.
Here.
Can I get an approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
A second?
A motion and second. All of us in favor say aye.
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 Gary in there? Okay, we're going to move on to visitor communication. A couple of notes. First of all, with a large audience, we do need to limit time. So everybody has two minutes and there is a clock up there to help people. Kind of try to stay in that two-minute window is really appreciated. And, and secondly, I just want to make a couple of comments because there has been a lot of rumors flying around in the community over the last few weeks. So I just want to reiterate some of the facts of, of anything having to do with roundabout. And obviously people can comment on anything else that they want because it is public comment, if the comments are in regards to that. Nothing has changed in this process and August thirteenth, council decided to task staff with, you know, creating an arts council to help with our public arts policy and public arts placement program that is growing. And so nothing has changed in that. Staff is working on that, but that's going to, to take, you know, a number of months to kind of get that up and running because we've got a lot of other things going and a, a small, hard-working staff. They've got some big projects coming up ahead of us really, really soon here. So nothing has changed in that timeline or that process. Also, there was some talk that the money that was earmarked for this project has been allocated to something else. That is not true. There has been no discussion on that. And think maybe in some discussions, it was brought up that this money is in our U R A fund, our Urban Renewal Agency Fund, which is paid for by the citizens of Sisters and the property taxes. That is money that is to go to basically the downtown core for enhancements to the downtown core. So while it is earmarked for that, it is not, you know, out of the realm of possibility that if there was some other bigger, better, more important need, that that money could be used for something else as well. However, there's been no discussion at all on that with, with council. And the, the money is, is still there and has not been reallocated to anything else. So I just wanted to clear those things up. I didn't want anybody to, to, to speak on topics and then that weren't totally clear on, on that. So with that, I think our recorder Rebecca has a list of the sheets of people who have asked to speak. We will start with people in the room. If there's anybody online, then we will go to them and, yeah, go ahead.
Eric Strobel.
So Eric, Eric's going to show us how we do it. He's our Edco representative, but he can walk up to the mic and two-minute timer there if you need it.
Started already, okay.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Good evening, counselors. Eric Strobel with the Sisters Director for Edco. And I wanted to invite you and the rest of the Sisters community to a mixer that we're holding next Thursday evening from four to six at the C four C hub. It's meant to kind of create awareness of our program and what we're doing here in Sisters. We'll do a little networking. I'll introduce the board and then give kind of an update of what's happening in economic development in Sisters. So we'll have Lucky's Woodsman, it will be the food, we'll have some beer and wine, so it should be a great time. So hope you can make that and hope some Sisters, uh, community people show up. You can sign up on Edco's website. It's edcoinfo.com and we have an events page and you can sign up there. So would love to see everybody there and, and give us some support. So thanks.
I'd like to emphasize mixer.
Yeah.
I already got my ticket.
All right.
Lori Kimmel.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I did forget to say that when you come up, please say your full name and your address.
For the record, my name is Lori Kimmel, nine two five East Creekview Drive. I am original Oregonian. I come from a pioneer family. I am retired Air Force and I know what true leadership is. A mayor and a city council should not have, make statements that have the appearance of inclusion. A leader should listen to the people and bring it to a vote to the people. A mayor should embrace the culture. The culture of this town is westerned. It has been western for over eighty years with the rodeo. And I really feel that some of the statements that have been made smack of inclusion. This is what I would like you to do. I would like you to put it up to a vote to the people and have a true public hearing. Western is our culture here. There used to be cattle ranches here. There, there used to be, we still have hay ranches along the one twenty-six. This is a western culture. You need to embrace it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you and sorry, who's next?
Patty Cordoni.
Patty Cordoni, Peel Box thirty-five hundred. I also own buildings in Sun Ranch and pay taxes into the U R A and to the city. Regarding Red Rock, the statue in the roundabout, we have reached a cultural divide. We all know that at this time and it's within our community. The best way to conclude the standoff of the Red Rock statue in the roundabout is to put it to a vote of the citizens. Mayor Letts and President McDougal are against putting it, this on a ballot and citizens have a right to vote on this. The citizens do not feel it is a good use, oh, I'm sorry, the mayors and the president feel that this is not a good use of taxpayers' dollars to put it on the ballot, a ballot or the vote. If it was put on a ballot, it takes the burden off the council, which I know it is a burden. And I, I spoke with you last week and I realize this is a burden for you and your families. So putting it on a ballot and into the hands of the people who put you in your positions would be a benefit for everybody. There are a couple of concerns about this process. Mayor Letts said, you know, even if the citizens' vote is to move forward with the artwork, this is what the mayor said, in the roundabout with the reserved one hundred and seventy-five thousand, Mayor Letts quote, and I will quote you because I wrote it down. It will have a low chance that the council will approve it. And at that time, yes, you did. I, I wrote it down word for word. When I directed, directly asked the mayor if the hundred and seventy-five would be held in the U R A budget for the roundabout artwork, the mayor said, and I will quote this again, it would not be set aside and is now slated for fire hardening downtown. Yes, you did. I spoke to the city finance manager, Joe O'Neill, and he stated he's not aware of the U R A budget amendment. So this needs and he stated he's not aware of the URA budget amendment. So this needs to be voted by on all council members and vote needs to go to the people.
Okay, next up.
John Baldwin.
Good evening. My name's John Baldwin, Po Box 1613 here in Sisters. I think I speak for many people when I say that we're kind of tired of this debate. I can't believe the council wants to entertain this much longer. And I think that bringing it to a vote regarding Red Rock and the Roundabout is the democratic thing to do. I also think that there needs to be some element of compromise here because that's what intelligent people do. And I see a beautiful patch of grass right over there next to the Public Schools Building that would, if Red Rock was situated there, eliminate any of the concern that Brother Ross has about people getting run over trying to get close to the statue out there on Roundabout. You could also put up any number of signboards explaining the history of why that sculpture is pertinent and meaningful to this community. With regard to the hockey rink, I know many guys in this town that play hockey. I know a lot of kids in this town who would love to play hockey, but their parents don't have time to take them to Bend. Please reconsider us having a hockey rink here in Sisters. Our kids deserve something fun to do. It's not just hockey. It's figure skating. It's curling. You do a lot of things in the wintertime and the kids in this town need something productive to do in the wintertime. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mary Orton.
Hi, my name is Mary Orton, 16811 Sisters Vista Court in Sisters, Sisters Country, not Sisters City. I have been actually enjoying the debate in the newspaper over this statue for the Roundabout. I think it's great when people really get engaged with public art and people are really engaged. And I've enjoyed learning a lot about your process and the whole history of Red Rock and Lane Frost and so on. That being said, I also understand that several of the councillors have received nasty, if not threatening, well, some threatening emails, messages from members of the public because of their perceived opposition to this idea. And I just want to say to all of you that, you know, I've known some of you for years. I've known some of you for a little while. And I think, you know, you're all fundamentally really good people trying to do the right thing for the right reason. And I would say that about everybody in this room as well. And I would hope that despite the strong feelings, the emotionality, the difficulty of this subject, that we can remember that we're all human beings. We all live in this community and we can disagree and not attack each other. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
All right.
Michael. Mark Reed.
Mark Reed, 516 East Taiyi Drive. I've lived in Sisters for 12 years now, which is not very long by a lot of standards, but I've come to really appreciate the fact that this is a diverse community and it runs on a lot of energy provided by people who are generous with their time and their resources. And I want to thank the council for your service. And I've been very dismayed to read the comments on the Facebook community page regarding this issue. I've been very dismayed to see it turned into a political football relating to things that have nothing to do with the city of Sisters. This is a great community. It's a diverse community. And to try and say that one thing is the only way to handle this Roundabout, I think is really ridiculous. Why can't the Red Rock statue be placed at the rodeo grounds? Why can't we have, I mean, there's many, many other themes that could be handled. We have the rodeo. It gets a lot of attention. It gets a lot of of press already and I just don't see why this has become such a divisive issue. And I thank you again for your time and good luck in resolving this unfair way.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, yeah.
Marna Griffin.
I'm Marna Griffin. I live at 69353 Deer Ridge Lane in Sisters. We've lived here for about 11 years. My parents lived here for 40 years before that. Both of my parents were very involved in the rodeo. So when we moved here, of course, I became involved as well. But we lived in Reno for 40 years before we moved here. And my husband was the mayor of Reno way back when. And one of the things that I learned from his experience there was that when there was a situation like this where safety was, it seems to me, a big concern of yours, that they had staff reports that went out and did really comprehensive studies of why particularly this Roundabout is different from other Roundabouts where we couldn't have this statue. So I just wanted to know, is that the policy of Sisters? Has there been staff reports that have said this is a unique Roundabout that's very unsafe for people to to have the Red Rock there? No?
Well, this is not a back and forth time, but however, at the end of the meeting, we would have more time to because some of the
I think that what that issue has kind of confounded me and certainly a lot of the people I was here when you talked about this before, safety seemed to be the the thing. And I don't know why, we don't know why you don't want this. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Michael.
For the record, I have a big problem with the bull. I don't think the firefighter is a good idea, the backlash. Not everyone's really kind when they don't like you. Think about what I say. You'll get it. Earring entertainment wrestler Hulk Hogan, Hulk Hogan passed on, brought back memories. A horsewoman near here on her five acres. Someone who knew her knew no one else able to multitask, security, property cleanup, caretaking, seeing her to bed, sometimes bathing and dressing. Her horse is sold a few years earlier. She existed in silence 24/7 in her singler chair or bed. She was too difficult physically and psychologically without bringing commitment and insight, like an old damaged horse having existed too long in a very bad environment, her environment being society. And she shared parts of her history with me, which she had not with others. When very young, far across the sea, she was an errand runner and office secretary for Central Command Operations. First half of the 1940s in Britain, Britain, surrounded by all types of people, including generals, remembering Prime Minister Churchill, well, all with a common purpose. Moving forward in historical place and time, America in the later 80s and 90s through cable into her home, she was for a while a fan of WrestleMania. This is what was amazing to me, even now. It's what America had to offer to escape the found her. Am I timed up?
Yeah.
Can't finish?
No, we can't keep it short. We have a big crowd tonight. Sorry, Michael.
Point where I was going.
All right. See you next time.
That's all the in-person requests for speaking I have.
Hello. Mike Davis, 352 Hood Avenue. I want to go back to the meeting that the mayor, Sarah Jordan was there and Carrie with Patty last on last Tuesday. Either you're lying or Patty's lying because she said, she told the guy at the Nugget, we sat down with a meeting bill. Hopefully, he's not here. He's not here tonight. And he didn't put it in the paper correctly, that you said the funds for the Roundabout have already been allocated elsewhere. So if you're shaking your head, you got you, Sarah and Jordan and Carrie to say the truth, which you won't answer tonight. You said the money was sent downtown for fire hardening. So is that not true? The money is still in the Roundabout? Michael, is the money still in the Roundabout? You can shake your head. You don't have to talk. Cheryl, is the money still for the Roundabout? Have we moved it on? Can you can you shake heads or we can't do that either?
I'll, if you don't mind, let me answer.
Pause, Mike.
Because I think
Because if he's gonna talk, I'm gonna pause.
There has not been a URA budget change at all. We haven't even had a meeting since then. So no money has, no money has changed at all.
So she went on her own and told that to Patty? Because I don't take Patty as a liar or someone who gets something misconstrued.
I can't comment on that.
Okay.
But the fact is, nobody has moved around in any budget regarding the Roundabout.
Okay, so the money's still there? As far as you know. Okay, well, that's not the what she took out of that meeting. The other thing too, that I want to say real quick, I'll make it quick about the flat fire. You didn't thank the firemen one time, Mayor Letts. You went on the news or the radio or wherever you did at the newspaper and you thanked Tina Kotag for passing that bill and every other agency, but I didn't hear one time did you thank a fireman, not once. Your business is fire. You have a fire consulting firm. So you you credit defensible spaces and fire prevention. That's your business. If this fire hardening thing downtown is real, that's also your business. So there is, there's a, there's a conflict of interest, whether it's true or not, it's going around this town. So you know, you don't, you don't really care what the people have to say. But there is something going on with this council and it's not the end tonight. You know, it's unfortunate Gary couldn't be here to hear the rest of it, but something's going on in this town and the people are catching on to it. Again, California, Bend, Vermont, Maine.
Mr. Davis Garius here. He's hearing all of this. You don't need to worry.
Are there anybody online?
If you're online and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand. I see none.
Okay, thank you. So we have a no presentations tonight and do I have an approval of consent agenda?
I move to approve this consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. All right. So interesting evening. We don't have any hard topics tonight, so we can move on to other business. And first up is this response to prior meeting public comments and city manager Wheeler.
Yeah, last meeting, there wasn't any public comments.
Okay. All right. You want to move on to staff comments?
I'd love to.
Okay.
Yeah. So a couple of events coming up. You have your conference for the League of Oregon Cities that's coming up on October 2nd. So if councillors want to register, I think the early registration ends tomorrow at 5:00 PM. I think we just have a couple signed up so far, but that's in Portland. I think it's the 100th anniversary or something. So they're planning a big one this year. And then September 19th, we have the Central Oregon President or the Central Region for the LLC President's Reception here at Sisters City Hall. And I think that has to be registered, registration too. So let Rebecca know if you're interested in that. We've been contacted about a legislative housing tour that's going to take place in central Oregon. That's on October 20th. So Scott and I blocked timeout because I believe they want to get an update on our urban growth boundary expansion. And then I think Habitat for Humanity is doing a groundbreaking at that same time. And I was going to talk about Edco's mixer, but Eric did a nice job of giving you a reminder about that. So we're excited September 18th at the hub. And then I also wanted to plug an event, application that we got in coming up called the Star Party because we are Dark Skies Certified Community. So this will be our first kind of celebration event that Explore Sisters is going to organize at Cliff Clements Park. I think that's also on September 18th. Yes, thanks, Jackson. September 18th, that that evening, of course, it's got to be dark. So I think after 7:00 PM is when it kicks off. If the weather's not cooperative, then it would be on September 25th, I believe, is what the application is. So pretty exciting to finally have an event there that, you know, community-based, but also celebrating our Dark Skies certification. Those are the updates from me. I think we'll have staff updates. I'll just go down the line, guys. Scott with the community development first. Sure, unless you want to grab a mic, you guys can pass it around.
Good evening, everyone. For community development, community development department updates. Just that obviously the biggest item that we have going on right now is the urban growth boundary amendment. And as you probably all are aware, it's passed through the Steering Committee for the recommended boundary. It's also gone to the Planning Commission for their review and they've recommended, they recommended the same boundary that the Steering Committee recommended. So on September 24th, we're going to bring it forward to the council for your consideration. And if if you want to act that night and recommend a boundary, then we would move right on into the formal land use process that would be underway soon, soon after that. But we're also open if council needs more discussion or more time, we certainly can incorporate that as well. And if the public is interested in kind of where we're at with that, there is a website or a page on the city's website that has a full update on what's going on with that. Or if anybody wants to call me, they can do that too. So we are also going to be doing in-person interviews for our associate planner position. We did some initial interviews last week and the week prior. And we've got three candidates that we're excited about that we're going to be interviewing next week. So hopefully something comes out of that and we can offer a position and have somebody in, you know, maybe by the middle of October, somewhere around there, hopefully, because we could certainly use the help. We're staying busy with land use applications, nothing, nothing major to report or to that has been submitted. We're seeing a lot of lotline adjustments, partitions, those kinds of things. We're starting to see people take advantage of some of the, you know, the code amendments that we've done in the past where we've, they've got more opportunities for different kinds of housing types on lots. We're seeing more smaller stuff, infill, small infill. So we're not seeing obviously bigger subdivisions or big commercial projects because a lot of those have been, there's a lot of those have already been done. But we have, having said that, we have been having, still having some pre-development discussions with folks that are interested in doing, in doing some bigger development, commercial development. So it's not like we're not hearing from people. The building permits are still continuing along fairly steady. We're getting obviously the building permits in for the large commons projects over here on Adams. Habitat's moving forward with its cottage development over at the Woodlands Development. And we're still getting building, a few building permits from Sunset Meadows. And then Woodlands is about ready to file their plat for phase three. So we anticipate we'll start getting somewhere permits there as well. And then as far as code amendments, we're looking at bringing back the building hardening requirements now that the state has developed a process for local adoption of the building hardening requirements. So Matt's going to start working with our building department and fire department to bring that back for your review. Just go to the council because it's a municipal code issue. And then we're also looking at Uh, for your review. Just go to the council because it's a municipal code uh, issue. Uh, and then we're also looking at the council requested updates to the to the design standards, the repetition uh, uh, standards that we discussed. We're looking, we're applied for a grant to maybe get a consultant to help us do a, an audit of our code uh, to kind of find out where we're not in compliance with state law. So we might just kind of combine, if we're successful with that, might combine some of those design changes you guys have requested with just updating the code and bringing it into compliance at the same time. So, any questions?
Um, Scott, if if we wanted to get ahead, because sometimes the packets don't come out till Friday before the meetings. Looking at the planning commission packet for the U G B, um, you know, area and and boundaries, that would be appropriate.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Jackson, Public Works.
Good evening, council. Uh, some public work updates. Uh, we have a lot of road work going on around town. Uh, probably the most obvious one is the uh, force main project on Jefferson Avenue. Uh, they have started that work. They're proceeding in smaller sections. They're using road closures and detours. Uh, a little bit of a disruption for residents, but hopefully keeping both drivers and the workers safer during that process. And they can hopefully move a little faster without any disruptions. Uh, another pump station project, Rope Street is at 60% design, uh, shooting for a June 2026 bidlet on that one. Gateway Park and Mobility Hub Bus Shelter has been ordered and a site plan for a dog park uh, is getting drafted, uh, looking at a Parks Board review of October 1st for that one. Uh, what we're calling Barclay Improvement Phase Three is the striping from Pine to the Barclay Roundabout. So that's that three lane cross section uh, that has been striped. And we have our crosswalks in place there. Adams Avenue Streetscape, uh, we're revising some of the plans. Uh, we did a sidewalk C E C. Hopefully those plans will be uh, back to us with some review soon. And we are looking at uh, getting started on public outreach September, October time. The Locust Roundabout Landscaping bids came in today. Uh, bids were higher than we had anticipated. So we're going to uh, dig a little more into those bids and strategize on uh, some cost-saving measures on that. The last major road repair project or road maintenance project, I should say, was a seal coat project. We did get one bid in. Uh, we reached out to about half a dozen. Uh, the bid was very high. So we are going to rebid in spring uh, with a slurry seal for that. And then a couple pedestrian projects we have Elm Street and Camp Polk. Both of those multi-use paths are proceeding through design. And we're working with C E C on uh, utility conflicts and um, especially with Elm Street, them getting their utilities in place before our path goes in. And then the North Locust Corridor Safety Improvements. We just got a preliminary design and uh, it's circulating for comments at the moment. Some events coming up. Glory Days Car Show uh, is going to be this weekend. And then starting the week of the 22nd, Folk Fest is going to start setting up in Village Green Park. And Jordan mentioned the stargazing event. Any questions?
Car show is 10 to 3, something like that. Does that sound about right?
10 to 2, I think.
Sounds accurate.
Right in there somewhere.
Yeah.
I think it's good to be able to say the hours, um, just so people know when to show up, especially me. I'm gonna go, I'm, I'll be there at that one.
And has there been any comments or complaints from people with the, all the road projects or the force main project or?
We have not heard. Uh, initially when we put out the notices, folks just calling, asking for some more information, but um, our department hasn't received any complaints.
Seems to be moving pretty fast. So that's, that's good.
Uh, Glory Days Car Show, 10 to 2, September 13th.
You did forget to mention the, you know, that you lost a tree to lightning. It wasn't, wasn't our tree, but.
Yeah, that sounds like uh, fire department and O D F got on that pretty fast.
Yeah.
Really happy to have those folks here in town able to respond quickly.
Yeah. Definitely. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jackson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, anything tonight?
Sure.
Yeah.
Excel spreadsheet tip of the week.
Yeah.
I was just looking at one.
Oh, boy.
Actually, the Republic's new CFO's got some fancy ones. So I was gonna kind of glean some tricks from his. But uh, just give you an update, uh, just real quick, a few things. Um, the the Gateway Park Dump Station, that is actually uh, kind of uh, increasing its uh, kind of majority of of dumps versus the campground. So we're kind of at a 60, 65, 35, and now it's almost 50, 50. So our camp posts are doing a a really good job of redirecting people over there and people have been using that, enjoying it. So uh, that's been great. Been meeting with some uh, banks, placement agents, they call them for our U R A uh, kind of financing strategies, especially with Adams Avenue and kind of maximizing our indebtedness to pursue uh, completing that project. So uh, that's going really well. Um, and the other thing that's been consuming a lot of our time is just our annual audit prep. So that's uh, early next month. Um, it takes quite a while to prepare all those source documents and procedures and things for that. So um, that's been um, taking again, a lot of our time. And then uh, yeah, then lastly, we've been expanding our online payments. A lot of people have been asking for that. Uh, you can pay event fees now online. And again, I think like I've said to you before, those seem like kind of trivial, small things, but for us and our staff, that's actually a pretty big lift. Uh, believe it or not. So we're going to try to integrate some receivables as well into that. So we can take other types of payments uh, rather than just utilities and miscellaneous payments like, you know, fuel tax and lodging tax, things like that. So some pretty neat tools that will kind of just help us feel more efficient. And that's about it. Unless you have anything else for me.
Do we review the audit at some point? Is that?
Yes.
That works?
Yep, yep, absolutely, absolutely. The whole audit report will be uh, available to you all. And then then the auditor will have their presentation as well.
Okay, we had the auditor come this year. That was.
Yeah, yeah, he did kind of a, yeah, governmental auditing 101. Um, yeah, it was a nice deep dive into into some of the
Okay.
Kind of procedures and whatnot. So they they kind of go all over the place. We've had it very brief. We've had it very thorough. Um, but you don't want a clean report, which is what we typically get. So that's always good.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Carrie.
All the tall people. Um, so one of the things that I've been a partner with, with both the school district, the Forest Service, S P R D, and the fire district is working on a job um, shadow agency internship. So Amy Beyonda, who was part of our C L A cohort this year, is putting that together through the school district. We're starting to work towards more internships. And this is that first step. So we will have a high school intern in the building um, from September 22nd through October 3rd for about one hour a day. So I'll be putting together some things for them to learn and shadow and all kinds of different things. And they'll go to all of those agencies, which is, I think, a great experience. So we're starting out with one this year. Um, and Amy's going to start to build that program through the high school. So that's been pretty exciting. Um, and even more exciting that she's a C L A graduate that's putting that together. Um, speaking of C L A, I turned in today a grant or yesterday a grant. Um, I submitted to the Oregon Capital Foundation to find, to help fund that Civic Leadership Academy. Um, I asked for two, half of two years, so 50% of the cost for two years for the program. So I'll find out about that. Um, preliminary in the next month or two, and then the final in December. So and then I'm also working right now, starting to work with P S U for an agreement for at least a one-year extension to that. So we'll um, do that in the next, probably a couple of months. It will come before council. Uh, this morning, we met with the Partnership on Houselessness, um, that group that has been convening for over a year and a half. And we worked on integrating the community feedback that we got from the June 24th meeting into our action plans and then also working on F A Q uh, for each of the priority areas to uh, answer quite a few of the questions that the community had. So look for that to come out to the community sometime. Hopefully in the early part of October, we need to meet one more time to kind of finalize what we worked on and make sure that we're um, uh, can all read each other's work and make sure we're answering the right questions. But that's been a very, it was a very productive day today and and working to to bring that information forward. And then we reviewed the R F Ps for the signage master plan, um, had that out for R F P. We had three that came back. And um, we did choose um, a, a group to do that work. And we're working on an agreement right now that R F P Review Committee was Jackson, um, Jordan, myself, and Scott Humper from Explore Sisters, who's also done um, these kind of signage master plans before. So we'll bring that to, towards the council. Um, I'm hoping for the next meeting, but I'm guessing it might be the October 8th meeting that it comes for approval on that. And then a couple more mark your calendars. Uh, Wednesday, September 17th, the District Mapping Advisory Committee is meeting here at City Hall. So that is the Deschutes County um, mapping committee that's working on what Deschutes County Commissioners will look like. That is a public meeting. So um, anybody is welcome to come to that. And then on October 20th through 24th, um, is the Republic Fall Cleanup. So um, get that on people's calendars. And as a reminder, the council president, the mayor talked about, that's a great time to get rid of pine needles and anything flammable around your house. So um, that's, information will be available on our website. It's available at Republic. Um, there's maps is when it will be out for people's areas that are going to get picked up. So anything we can get out in that regard to that would be great. And then just one last thing, an update on Trinity Place. Um, Clayton will be here at our next meeting. He has been out on vacation for a little bit. And we'll, we'll get a little update on where we're um, looking with that project, um, how it's moving forward. So that's coming up uh, soon. Any questions?
Thanks, Carrie.
Thanks.
Thanks, Carrie. And uh, Mayor, uh, just a couple of clarifications um, from the public comment section. I think there was a a couple of questions about staff report or a question about staff reports on the safety issues with the roundabout art. Um, the process that we went through with the call for artists had representative from O D A and then Public Works as well to make sure that we were following the O D A directives, but also any of the proposed art pieces that were a part of the 50-plus submissions that they vetted, um, fit those directives and and, you know, um, they looked at the like, safety issues. When it comes down to individual pieces of art, though, um, we don't produce a separate like, safety report or anything like that. Um, and then on uh, I think it was sort of addressed this, but anything that changes with the budget, typically that would go to either the Urban Renewal Agency Board uh, for reallocating funds or moving funds from a project to another project. Um, I think in this case, you know, the Urban Renewal, um, you know, plan has several projects identified. Um, but we take that to the board anytime we allocate funds uh, to a project or reallocate funds. And so in the adopted budget, there was funds allocated for roundabout landscaping and roundabout art. If we were to change that, you know, staff would produce a report, we would set a meeting, guys would have a debate and discussion about that and then have to have a um, a vote to to move those funds.
And all of those are public meetings.
Correct.
And there would be time for people to comment in favor if they want.
Yeah, and you know, if it's a, if we're reallocating funds from a different category from like, say, you know, um, capital to materials and services or something, then then it would have to be like a budget supplement and have a public hearing. Uh, in this case, this would all be in capital, but because of the significance of the, the amount, it would still take it to council. Or in this case, the board.
Okay, yeah, thanks for clearing that up. Okay, we can go into mayor counselor business. Anybody want to start?
I'm going to talk about roundabout art. So do you want me to go first or last?
Doesn't matter, go first.
Okay. Um, I, I have four, four points uh, that I want to mention. Um, the first one is, is council last year started this process and we were looking for roundabout art. And uh, before we could even ask for artist submissions, we put out a poll. And the poll that came back was Western Heritage. And that is how that process uh, began. So I just want to remind everybody that we're the ones that asked for the Western art. And we went through two um, committees. Uh, the first one uh, found that the application, the applications weren't always complete. And part of it, I think, was the applications themselves. And so they did a second process. And while the, the bull did not make the final of that, um, I think that we can easily see that um, many of the items that the artist committee didn't find uh, appealing with the bull. It was um, budget concern was one, engineering was another. And and lately you guys have brought up public safety. And um, the budget concern was taken care of with a donation of $200,000 by a private citizen. The engineering concerns were addressed uh, by bringing on um, some local citizens who do installation, art installation. Um, I don't know if they're officially on the project, but I know it's a local company that we all know. And then the engineering, uh, that's the engineering. And then the safety concerns, um, unofficially, there was a uh, a new 3D that came out recently that showed a fence around it and a little higher and some rocks to to protect it. So I can honestly say, I think that the public has done a pretty good job of trying to uh, the proponents of the bull have have come up with some very good ideas about how to make that particular piece of artwork. The other thing I want to remind everybody, including my fellow counselors, is that with a majority of three to two or higher, anything can be changed. Um, the process can change. Uh, money can be moved around, um, as long as it's within the same budgetary area. Uh, and so the uh, the possibility always exists if there's three people on council that that all agree the same way. And I really would like to to ask all of you to reconsider this. Uh, and the reason I say that is because we've asked for a Western Heritage piece of art. We uh, have had one presented to us by I would say hundreds of people uh, that agree with it. Um, I know that that's not half of the half of the community, but it's a very strong outpouring. And there's been little to none against it. Um, especially publicly in this room. Obviously, we've had a couple of detractors and a couple of people on the fence. I get that. Uh, but it's, it's mostly been uh, proponents of the ball. And honestly, I think their biggest concern is very valid. And that is because we've asked for Western Heritage art and it was presented to us. And there's one that is paid for, ready to go, local artist kind of checks off all the boxes as far as I'm concerned. And it's being ignored. And it feels like that council as a whole, as a body, is ignoring our Western heritage. And that's the identity of this town. And I think that that's where people are coming from. That's where the emotion is coming from. And I get it. I'm part of that. I love this town. This is a Western town. I think that this art, some of you have even said that it's beautiful. Um, do I get concerns that some people might want to climb up on there? Sure. But I don't think it's going to be that common. And I think that if we plan correctly and have an area even close by where there's reader boards off away from the roundabout explaining the art. Um, let the art be art, but let another area be the place where you learn about it and maybe have a photo op with your back to it. Um, I think that, I think that something can come out of this. I really believe that. And I just want to offer myself up to be the intermediary, if I can be. Um, and say, hey, here's an idea. What do you guys think? I've talked to the public and I really would, would really like to see this uh, happen and find a way to address the rest of your, the rest of council's concern with it. And if I can do that, I'd love to do that. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Excellent. Me or Gary? Gary, do you want to have? Do you have any updates for us?
Yeah, I'm gonna step in and towards the end. I'm gonna process what Michael has said. I have some replies to that. I think we're on a different page. And uh, I respect him. I want to think about how I want to word this.
Okay. I mean, I can go ahead and do some updates or, you know. I don't care. Okay, I can just kind of update on uh, busy last two weeks, obviously, um, you know, still we're attending a lot of flat fire cooperating meetings and and other meetings, um, kind of throughout the end of that process. If I, if it wasn't appearing to the public that I wasn't thinking firefighters, that's not, that's I, I was, um, because sometimes I was on the phone personally with a lot of them, because I know a lot of them locally and have their phone numbers in my phone. So I was talking to So I was talking to a lot of them personally. I was at a lot of every cooperative meeting I could get to and talking directly with the incident management team. I am a former wildland firefighter, as is my husband's. And we have many, many, many friends who work in this business. And, you know, it, I take that a little personally that I was not appreciating them or thanking them. Because I was, I have, I always will, even our, my colleagues and friends who have passed away in the line of duty. So just be sure that that has happened and continues to happen as I see people that I know and have worked to protect our community. But protecting our community is a team effort. And that also included the hard work of citizens that did defensible space work. It included the people in the State House who have that bizarre thankless job of working there and trying to get the tug of war over money. And out of Senate Bill seven sixty-two, a lot of money was allocated for new fire engines, for new positions. One of the, you know, we got one of those fire engines right down the street, which responded to this fire. And there was a number of those fire engines, because they're marked separately and differently than other engines on that fire. So it was in my mind, a great use of show of force of, of government actually working and getting taxpayer dollars into the hands of our local agencies. So they had engines and they had extra personnel and they had extra training and they had extra coordination. And then obviously, a lot of our wildland compatriots in the ODF and Forest Service and VLM, who do not get enough thanks because they are never seen. They are in the woods, they are in the backwoods, they are not on the streets. They are camping out, sometimes out there, don't even come back into camp. So I had tremendous effort and a lot of lessons learned in that process that we are continuing conversations with the Fire District. Myself, Counselor Ross, Jordan, the three of us got to go out to look at some of the, the area that burned with the Fire District, with, with the chief and, you know, a couple of the firefighters that were out there. So got to walk through and see how the fire moved through the area, you know, defensible space and what happened in some, some areas and, and some of the challenges of, you know, access to water and energy or electricity going out and all these kind of things. So it was a really great kind of after action review of that process.
I'm trying to listen.
So that is one thing that we did to learn more so we can continue working with the Sisters Camp Sherman Fire District on the fire hardening that we've been working so hard on. Today I attended the, let's see, the Heart of Oregon Corps. Speaking of defensible space, they had a groundbreaking for their new facility in Redmond, which is going to kind of consolidate everything. And they've been kind of spread out and, you know, obviously they have an office out Cloverdale here, but they're going to kind of consolidate into this new facility in Redmond. And so that was really exciting. That was really well attended. I mean, that's just a fabulous program that really helps sixteen to twenty-four year olds gain skills and home building and, you know, firefighting to a certain extent, but defensible space. Just so much work that they do. It's, it's, it's really moving and they're not fully funded yet. So I recommend if you have any interest in that, they are looking to get that over the finish line funding wise. They're hoping to move in in a year from now.
Does that mean the Cloverdale, excuse me, I'm sorry I interrupted you. Does that mean the Cloverdale place is not going to be?
That's my, yeah, that's my understanding, yeah. The school district, Sister School District owns that building. So they'll have to decide if they're gonna, you know, keep that, sell it or lease it to somebody else, something like that. But my understanding is, yeah, they're going to consolidate into the Redmond facility on the east side of Redmond. So, so that was exciting to attend. I attended the Neighbor Impact Listening Session with a few people from different community organizations. Corps was there, C4C, the library, Kiwanis. It was a really good opportunity. They were just wanting to know what was happening in Sisters and Sisters Country and what our needs were, you know, where our gaps were. You know, so really just a listening session. So we got to share a lot of ideas. And they're hoping to have, even though they have a present, Neighbor Impact has a presence here in the regards that they fund a lot of programs in our area that, you know, help people in our community. And they don't have, have like a physical presence. So they are trying to work towards that. You know, maybe, you know, part-time or sharing an office space with some other entity. But, you know, really understanding, it'd be great to have kind of a one-stop shop person here who could help with all these different, different services that they, they provide everything from, you know, childcare to help with housing to everything in between. So hopefully we'll see some, something come out of that. And attended the first superintendent's coffee of the year. That was, that's always fun and enrollment is up. They don't really count the, the full numbers until they're about two weeks into school because people kind of come and go and come and go for a couple of weeks. So, but, but definitely saw kind of a spike in enrollment. So that's always exciting to, to get more kids in the schools and, and a great start to the year, everything.
Did they say how many is?
I wanted to say it was around thirty. Yeah, it's pretty big for the school district. And, and honestly, you know, two new, two new principals, elementary and middle school. However, this is like, this is the first year the elementary school has been like stable. Like there hasn't been overcrowding or moving classrooms or moving or anything, you know, in the first time in, you know, five or six years where it's, the teachers can walk in and it's just kind of get to teaching. So I think they're really excited about that.
The big knot is the sophomore class in high school. It's like a hundred and fifty and the junior class is like eighty.
Oh, wow.
So there's a, that knot, let my kids in that knot. So that knot's been moving up every year.
Oh, interesting.
When it, it'll be a big graduating class in twenty twenty-eight.
Oh, it'll be fun. I, I think that was it. Yeah, I mean, that's it, at least for the meetings I've attended in the last couple of weeks. Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you. So I attended the Flat Fire Recovery Meetings. There were two of them. They've, that, these were led by C4C. There is a Flat Fire Relief Fund for fire victims. The businesses unfortunately took a hard hit Labor Day weekend. Fifty percent is what I heard lost. So please shop local, shop local. C4C has put together a great website page for flat fire recovery information on how to support those that lost property, how to support the emergency responders, how to support the local nonprofits and our local business. So please go to the C4C website to see that and if you'd like to help out. We are still in recovery mode. People have lost their homes. So we want to do what we can to help with that. The Deschutes County Emergency Impact Department will begin collecting forms from anyone who has lost property or has other needs as a result of the fire. That link will be sent out by C4C and they'll start gathering that information and connecting those people, their needs to the appropriate resources. So there's really some good work going on here. It's not like the fire is over and everybody leaves and people are left to try to figure it out. There's a lot of great recovery support going on and I'm really happy to see it. November ninth, there will be a Flat Fire Recovery Community Event at the elementary school, put on by C4C from four to five thirty, if anyone is interested in attending that. I'll just jump to one more meeting, Aging in Your Own Home. I attended this at the Redmond Library. This was a very wonderful event that was put on there by Hospice of Redmond. So as you all know, we have lost our very large assisted living facility, the lodge. So out of that came this group of folks that are putting together, serving our seniors group that I've mentioned before to try to help people age at home and stay independent as much as they can. Well, this talk at Redmond Library was all about that. And it was going through the phases of where maybe in the beginning you just, you're fairly independent, but you might need some help with your medication dispersments, for example, tools around that. And then all the way up to hospice care. So I'm working with serving our seniors to bring that presentation here to the Sisters Library. So I think that'll be very beneficial to our community considering the loss of the lodge.
Would you, would you bring that up again when, when it's scheduled?
Yes.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I'll send out emails on that too. Finally, I, again, talk about the elephant or the bull in the room. I'm going to thank Mary for your comments about civil discourse. I, I just ask everybody, please, yes, we all have the right and the freedom of speech, thank goodness, in this country. But I also know that we have a mental health crisis in our country. And a post that you may make on social media or anybody that you might think is innocuous for someone who might be having a bad mental health day could interpret that as a call to action that we would all regret. So please post responsibly. Whatever your opinion is, I think we all have that right. But please think about the people that are reading it, getting threat letters, being concerned about our own safety is something we shouldn't have to be doing in this community. And, you know, some of these threats and comments that were said, names that were being called are, could be from people that don't even live here. Okay? So that's the danger of social media. I've, I've tried to keep the communication line open with people. After our last meeting, I've talked to several people, hour and a half long. Let's keep this conversation going. It's important. And I just encourage everybody to please continue to do that. Keep an open mind. Let's solve this. Let's find something that we can all hopefully agree on at some point in some way. And I think Michael, as far as being a intermediary, I, I'm, I'm, I don't, maybe I have to think about that a little bit more, but I feel to my fellow counselors that I respect all of you. If any of you were called names or anything like that, I'd be the first to say stop. I know these, this team here, they're wonderful, they're hardworking. I don't want to see us dividing like that. I kind of feel like this mediary, mediary role would maybe divide us in a way that I really don't want to see happen. I want to keep us equal in all of our viewpoints and our opportunities to express those viewpoints. But I'll think some more about that and thank you for putting that out there as an option. And I just pray for our country. Thank you.
Wow, that's hard to follow. Thank you, Cheryl. You're always very eloquent and I appreciate that, very thoughtful, not that anyone else is not. I just, that was very, very personal and emotional and protective of us. Thank you. One of the things that my husband and I have talked about is that people are not just one thing. And when, when we go through times like this, it, it feels like it's really easy to start putting people in categories as one thing, not many things. And as we have these discussions, maybe you don't like the thing I'm being right now and you don't like what I'm saying or you don't like my opinion and that's okay. I, I have no problem with that. Just remember I'm something else too. And so is everybody in this room? I think that can cause real breakdowns when we overcategorize people. I have been really concerned about misunderstandings and wanting to go back. And I actually re-watched council meetings, a couple of council meetings because I wanted to, I can't remember what was said. I mean, seriously, I think I do. And then it's like, I can't remember the words and I, I, I'm not wanting to do a he said, she said, but I went back to the first council meeting when we talked, ended up talking about the roundabout and the, the bull statue. And that was a month ago. Okay, it feels like years ago in my heart because this has been very difficult. Not just for me, for everybody, and I understand that. And I did not hear anywhere where any counselor said that they do not want the sculpture. There is, let me finish that. So we've been, we've talked about the roundabout, but we also have been talking, we talked that night lightly about the city. And of course, we have not made any decisions. I heard people saying that it was a beautiful piece of art. Not that it was not meaningful to our culture, not meaningful to this community, but that people had concerns. You know, whether we all agree on that or not, what I would like to ask is that we do keep an open mind and that there's negotiation. And when, you know, Mayor Letts and I did have a meeting last week and I'm finding it hard to know where the negotiation would be because what I'm hearing is that it's one way or no way. And that's a hard thing to negotiate with. And so I would just like to put that out there. I feel like the, the channels of communication are going in so many different directions between so many people. It's difficult. Council processes are difficult. When, when we all speak, we have to be in the same room or, or meeting. Gary's up there. Two of us can be in a meeting at a time, but not anymore, having conversations. And of course, everybody, you know, in the public might talk to one of us or the other and hear different things. So I understand where the miscommunications come from. But anyway, I, I would like to figure out how we move forward with this, also realizing that there have to be some processes that are gone through. And, you know, we, I think Mayor Letts talked, I think it was today, about that, that processes have not changed right now. This was a an offering that was brought out of process. Okay, so that's not something we're used to dealing with. That's not, that's, that's not how council usually runs. And so that has become an awkward part of the puzzle. And, you know, I think we're trying to do our best there and, and continue with what we were doing. So yeah, I don't, I don't think I have anything else to say, but you know, we do all have to live, live with each other. This came up two years ago pretty heavily with, I was on the chair of the C4C Board. And the, we were talking about the, as a community, the possibility of a, of a shelter coming, coming into Sisters. And that was kind of a theme I stuck with then is that, you know, whatever we say stays and we all have to live with that. we all have to live with that. So, anyway, I appreciate everyone coming tonight. Thanks for being here.
And I guess I'm the tail on the dog. Um, first of all, I want to apologize to those you in the room who came to speak tonight. Um, something came up in my family and I needed to stay where I was rather than driving the over the mountains and then returning tomorrow morning over the mountains. So I was needed here. It was a last minute decision and, uh, I fully intended to be present. For those who were wondering why my screen was black most of it, it's because I'm on a very shaky network connection and rather than glitching, going in and out, I wanted to hear what you had to say. So I turned my camera off, which reduces the bandwidth. So I can hear all the comments and I heard them all. Um, my staff report, so to speak, is, um, related to what the topic was tonight. We had our meeting with the, uh, Sisters Board Advisory Committee. It was a very good meeting, a lot of discussion. I think even the strong proponents of the hockey rink and I'm, I'm from Maine. I play hockey and I curl. So do you, just so you understand where I'm coming from on this. And, uh, um, it's the biggest concern was the, the footprint of the facility. And so that's something that, that'll have to be discussed and move forward as, as we go along. Um, I will make one comment about sand volleyball pits next to a housing development. Uh, we have a name for those and if, if there are cats around, it is not a sand volleyball pit. It is a cat litter box. But anyway, that's, that's another problem for another day. Um, related to, you know, my concern on safety. I've had a, a counselor call it hogwash. Something that I did not appreciate, but that's okay. We all have our opinions. Uh, I'm not worried about vehicle safety. I'm not worried about, ODOT worries about vehicle safety in a roundabout. They want to know that that roundabout art, whatever it is, isn't going to distract the drivers. They want to know it's not going to fall on a car. And they want to know that it's put in such a way that if a vehicle goes up into the roundabout, it's unlikely to strike it. That's what they do and I have no problem with that. From their perspective, it's safe. I'm concerned about pedestrians and I, and I know there's disagreement on this and that's okay. Uh, but I've, I watch folks come. I live by the, the, the school. I live by the campground. And rodeo is a party and it's well, it's a damn good party. I enjoy every minute of it. And people are going to be hyped up. They're going to be excited and someone might not be this year, is going to decide they need to get next to that thing, take a picture. I know I've seen the rocks. I know I've seen the fence and believe me, a twenty-three-year-old isn't going to even worry about those. And I'm worried about that long haul trucker coming around the corner because if you look at how that roundabout's built, heading to bend, that's a blind corner coming in before they make the swing to go to bend. And a set of rear duals catching somebody and either injuring, maiming or killing them. It's, it's, I haven't got a problem with the statue. I got a problem with where you want to put the statue. And that's, that's where I am. I would love to see that statue somewhere in town. And I appreciated the comment someone made earlier today about another possible location. And I, I think that, um, I, I echo very much what Council President has said, which is that, uh, I've had some good discussions with some of you and, and I, they've been pleasant. Don't get me wrong. I have no, no complaints. Uh, I haven't had some of the, the hateful things said about me. They may come later, but I haven't had them. Uh, at least not to my face or in a way that I can find them. But everybody's been pleasant. Um, I think that that my problem is the, is that what you said, the all or nothing. There, there's no room for compromise when there is only one way to do it. And, um, it's going to take an awful lot of convincing to get me to think that that isn't going to be a safety issue at some point. And, uh, I just want to be upfront with you all about it. Now, we haven't decided, no money's been moved and all those things. And I'm not saying no to the, to the, to the piece of work. I think I'm just saying that I have severe concerns about the location and in my mind, they haven't been addressed yet. So that's where I am and I want to be upfront with everybody. And so as far as, uh, my discussions with other counselors, I, I think I want to have a talk with Michael offline. Uh, I like the man. I expect him. I, I think we just need to have a little discussion about, uh, how his letter struck me at the last meeting. And, uh, I think we can work that out between the two of us and not here. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thanks, Gary. Oh. Yeah, we can talk anytime. Um, again, I think that the concerns that you guys have, I think they should be addressed as s- specific concerns and give the public an opportunity to address them and, and try and make it work. You guys are saying that it's all or nothing. Well, it kind of is. And it is for this reason. It's the only one you have before you. And it's the only one we have to choose at this point. Now, does that mean we don't, won't have another one come down the road? Well, maybe. But this one is special and the reason it's special is because of local artists. Um, Red Rock being local, Lane Frost, a legend. Um, you know, there's, there's, it's, it's not just any old piece of art and there, there's going to be some down the road if, if, uh, if this gets, you know, played out long enough, there's probably going to be opportunity for other art to show up and be presented. And I don't think that that's necessarily a bad thing, but what we have with this piece of art is more money to build a nicer piece of art than we may ever see. Because a hundred and seventy-five thousand, as we've learned, is going to get you a couple of wheels that are kind of flat and I don't know, just not very appealing. And, um, that's not the sister's way. Sister's way is to do it up good, do it special. Um, and I, I think that we can come to a compromise somewhere between us as a body and an artist with the statue and a group of people that really like it and support it. And I don't know how we get there. It loo- it's looking pretty bad still, but you know, I think that if they, if, if we can tone down the rhetoric for sure, personal attacks, come on, that's, that's not good for anybody. Um, if I use the hard word hogwash, I apologize because it's not hogwash. That's your opinion, G- Gary. So I, I apologize for that, but I, I think that the safety concerns can be addressed and this piece of art can be installed at some point. If everybody can have an open mind and honestly, the only way things get done is to move to the middle. And right now we're here and here. Here and here. And somewhere in here is where the, where a compromise happens and where a solution comes from. And that's just, that's just it. That's just how this country works. And if we, if we have two sides and they're too rigid, it never gets to the middle. So if everybody just thinks about that and come up with ways where there's concerns and there's a, address of concerns. You have concerns and we can address them. And if we can get to the middle somewhere, maybe it happens. Maybe it still doesn't. I'm not saying this is a for sure deal or anything like that. But right now, everybody's too far apart. So if we can think about it and maybe there's some movement, um, let's hash it out. That's it. That's all I got. Uh, one more thing. Cheryl, thank you for your, I, I appreciate what you said to the emotional side of it. It is emotional because no matter what happens, we're still neighbors. And this is Sisters. We all moved here because it's still a beautiful place to live. And it doesn't matter if you've been here five years or fifteen years or thirty years. That doesn't matter. If we're accepting of each other as neighbors, we can still disagree on stuff and be good neighbors to each other. Thank you, Cheryl.
That's okay. Um, yeah, just two things on, on that topic. Well, you know, one is that I think, you know, not going to speak for others, but you know, I still, um, just because it's government and it can be, you know, dry and boring, but you know, we have processes in the process with, that we, you know, agreed on in the August meeting was that, you know, staff would, you know, create this, um, you know, arts committee and, you know, because we have, this isn't the only artwork and only location that we're thinking about art. There's, there's going to be other places. So, um, it just, because this, the timing of this ended up with that, that project, it just made a lot more sense. So let's, let's just, you know, do this in a more holistic manner. So, um, I'm really comfortable in waiting for that process to play out and, and letting staff, you know, do what we directed them to do. And then, um, with, you know, the help of an arts committee, um, you know, take this back on again. So, which will be, you know, a few months out, but, um, these, these things take time. So I, you know, I don't feel like there's any, um, time rush here. So that, that I know of, um, so I'm, I'm okay with that, that wait. Um, the other thing I want to address is that, um, for some reason, this has become a conversation or an argument over, um, pride and culture and a way of life, things like that. And I, I didn't, I didn't go back and re-watch the meetings, but I, I remember pretty clearly that and, and my conversations with all my fellow counselors and and community members, I, I don't ever recall anybody ever saying anything disparaging about anything about the Western culture at any moment at, at any time. Um, and if you've heard that we have said that, then I would check your sources because I have never heard a peep out of any of the five of us, um, in regards to that. And this has never been about that. It has just been about a certain, you know, certain piece of artwork in a certain location. You know, the Western culture here obviously is extremely important. Um, been here a long time. We all recognize that, you know, absolutely. And we enjoy that. Um, also, you know, but we have all also many other cultures in this community. You know, we have a huge culture of artists. We have a huge culture of musicians. We have a huge culture of fiber artists. We have a huge culture of outdoor enthusiasts, mountain bikers, skiers, snowmobilers, mo- motorcyclists. Um, and the wonderful thing is those aren't mutually exclusive. Most of the people in this community fall into multiple ones of those categories, you know? Um, and that's what makes living here so fantastic is that, um, we have way more things in common than we have different. And, um, I think everybody here appreciates, you know, the Western side, side of our culture here. Um, nobody's trying to hide it or disparage it or anything like that. Uh, so I really wanted to say that because I've also been hearing that, that people are feeling that, um, because it's been getting very emotional. And I wanted to really say that, um, clearly that this has never been part of the issue. It is just the kind of the boring stuff that we're tasked with, uh, being a council is that we have to look at stuff like safety and, and rules. It's an ODOT property and they have rules and it's, you know, we don't, that's not our jurisdiction, but we have an agreement to work with them. And it's just all the, the boring stuff and lawyers get involved and, um, but, you know, I, what I really appreciate about this community is, is just that diversity that, you know, we talked about earlier and you know, I know I've heard from a lot of people that, um, do not like the sculpture. I've heard from a lot of people that like it, but don't want it in that location and say, well, why can't it be over here or over here? Um, you know, it's, um, so I, I know that maybe you're, we all travel in different circles and hear different things, right? So, um, I, I just want you, um, I want people to understand that there's a lot of opinions on this situation in the community. Um, that's one other thing I wanted to say. Um, but you know, the thing is, is, you know, and I've, I've even talked to people that, that don't like the rodeo. Um, however, the wonderful thing about this community is that you know what they do on rodeo weekend? They, they go do something else. They don't go out and picket or, you know, tell people how they don't like it or anything. We just, you know, we just go on and do something else that weekend and, and we don't, you know, because you live here doesn't mean you have to like all the things that go on. Because there's so many things to do here. Everybody just kind of does their thing and respects each other and nobody wants, um, uh, you know, everybody wants to kind of live in peace together. So I just want to, um, keep that message out there. And Sisters was a very tumultuous place to live ten years ago. There was a lot of, um, you know, I was down the road, but was very privy to what was going on. I know you lived here, Michael, during that time, um, pretty ugly. Um, and, and that's kind of why C four C was created to kind of smooth that out. And, um, they did a great job with a lot of hard work from a lot of citizens to work together and communicate and talk one-on-one. And that's the thing, great thing about a small town is that we have that ability to still get in front of each other and talk one-on-one. So solve our issues and, and really focus on what we have in common.
Mayor Letts?
Yes, go ahead.
Just, just a couple, just a, one last thing. I, I also wanted to echo what I heard from the dais, especially, uh, from Council Pellerin, um, you know, it doesn't take much for somebody who's on the edge to go over the edge. Not that anybody in this room is what I'm talking about that reads these things on social media. I've seen the results of that. I've been through a school shooting. I've seen dead children on a floor. I know what that means. And that's why when you hear me talk about safety, I'm probably a safety nut because, for a variety of reasons. I can't change that. I have not had a bad interaction with anybody that's sitting in the room that I can see. I can only see some of your heads, not all of them. Um, everybody's been cordial and polite to me and I appreciate that. Um, I agree with it, with the discussion, what the mayor's, what the, what the mayor said. I also agree with what, uh, uh, Michael has said that we need to figure out where the middle ground is on this and, and like I said, and I appreciate if somebody came up with a suggestion on another location. And that's really kind of the first I've heard that. So I, I think that, um, if we can keep the dialogue going, we'll figure this out. But it's not going to happen as fast as I think some of you wanted to. And I think that's probably going to be a, a problem. But you've got to let us work the process. So again, thank you all. I apologize for not being there again. And, uh, you can meet me on the street when I get back in town late next week and tell me what you think. Just don't run over me and I'll be happy. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Gary. Does anyone else have any other comments? Okay. I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everybody for coming out and speaking.